The family and medical leave policy, student activity accounts, and long-range strategic planning. 8:20 PM, the Bye County Collaborative Quarterly Report with Ms. Spinelli. 8:25, acceptance of donations. 8:35, the school committee will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies with union personnel, the Foxborough Extended Day staff. The committee will return to open session. 8:50, we will return to open session, vote on the proposed 2016-2017 Foxborough Extended Day staff memorandum of agreement, and then 9 PM, other matters. Before we go on to visitors, first, we would like to offer our condolences to Joseph Garrity in the loss of your Mimi. I speak for the whole committee, I'm sure, in saying we offer you our sincere sympathy and deepest condolences, Jo, on your loss.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Maybe we could take a brief moment of silence.
Yes. I know it's just been a hard week for all of us who knew Pat very well, and certainly, Jo, you've been conducting yourself just wonderfully, and you have so many people here that care about you in the whole town, so it's been a hard thing.
Maybe a brief moment of silence, please. Okay, that, now, do we have any visitors who wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Maybe we should take them in date order. We have the April 4, 2016 minutes. Janet has put a corrected version on the table with a couple corrections on page two. Does anybody have any?
No, I recommend that we accept these as presented.
Please, did you have any?
Just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to second, no, I was going to second, so I'm not going to now.
Just one thing, I think it's a spelling thing on page three under the FY '16 budget update, second sentence from the bottom, and courier vehicle. Is that spelled?
C-O-U-I.
I know that some of us are a stickler for spelling and...
I don't know how that got past me, but I'm so glad you're fixing that.
With Beverly's, with Beverly's motion as amended, I don't know if we can proceed, but...
You just need a second, but thank you for pointing that out.
Marilyn's seconded.
Marilyn's seconded.
I did.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes? Four zero. I should say, Mr. Gardner is unable to be here tonight. I forgot to mention that at the start of the meeting, but since I'm here in his chair and he's not here, he's unable to join us tonight, so I will be running the meeting. All right, so those are done. The next meeting minutes are the April 12, 2006 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. Does anybody have any changes to those?
I want you to accept as presented.
Steve, I second. Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. All right. Dr. Bergo, so you're ready? Teaching and learning highlight?
I'm actually going to move over to the guest table so I can access the laptop there.
Fabulous. Give you a moment to get over there. I also had the pleasure of attending the Districtwide Parent Technology Night, and that was very, the fifth one, I thought it was wonderful.
Me too. I thought it was the best ever, actually.
Yes, I would agree with that.
And so, and one of the things that I thought was definitely one of the, one of the best ever, I'll wait till she gets set up, but I thought, which is why we kind of wanted to have, show this tonight, is the, the video, this, this is the, the wel, part of the welcome in the auditorium, but I thought the whole welcome was among the best, so I give Amy all the credit for that, and Aaron Hire, our tech director. And I, I will just have one thing to say, because there's so much that you can say after, but I felt the difference between the first few and this, our fifth, was that the first one or two, and I said this to Amy on the evening, that the first couple of years, we spent a lot of time in that introductory message saying, "We want to highlight all the good things we're doing related to technology integration and how technology supports the learning, the teaching and learning," but I felt we were still apologizing for we weren't. And so, we always had to offer the caveat, "Okay, these are all the great things, but here's also where we're going, and we know we need more of this, and we know we don't have any mobile devices, and we know..." So, I felt the first two years, we were still offering that balance of what we have that we're proud of, and where we honestly acknowledge where we need to go. And I think that's what really struck me in Amy's introduction was, "We don't do that, we're not doing that anymore, we're actually just highlighting the wonderful ways that technology supports our staff and our students in the process." So, for me, that was the big takeaway. But Amy did all the work, so I'll let her talk to you about it.
Well, it took a village, truly, to put it together, and what I wanted to just recap was the PowerPoint presentation that we had in the auditorium, just a couple of slides to set the stage here, but again, back to Debbie's point, is the video that was put together. Because the point of the evening really is to show how we're using technology in classrooms, and it's what the teacher is doing with our curriculum. And we always go back to the strategic plan and our technology plan being really the purpose and the intent, and focusing on what our goal was, which is really to show how we are leveraging technology in the classroom to improve student learning. Simply stated, our vision really is to make it to where it is a compelling learning environment, and one where kids are engaged, and they're able to think critically and collaborate with all of the tools that we have through Office 365, and to communicate, and to have all that creativity with being able to produce things, not just consume. So, speaking to where we've been in the last five years, this was our Fifth Annual Technology Night planned for parents, we had more teachers involved with more students involved, down to first graders showing how they're using interactive whiteboards in their classrooms to high school, as well as what it looks like in the AutoCAD, and then classroom as far as computer architecture design, to physics software that we're using, so many different pieces. And based on all of those different ways that technology is being used, we wanted to try to capture that across the district. And we've spent the last several months, our three technology integration specialists, really capturing snippets of video from elementary classrooms, middle and high, what it looks like on a daily basis, and how it really does spread across the curriculum. So, when we look at our journey and what that looks like in the classroom, it really does come down to carrying out that vision, we needed to increase our network infrastructure where the community and this committee has been so supportive in order to be able to have the capacity to do what we needed to do, building human capacity with our three technology integration specialists, now having Darlene Reed at the elementary level, Deanna Brozio at the middle school, and Julia Greenstein here at the high school, and being able to work daily with teachers and how they're integrating technology in their curriculum. Again, that supportive community, and truly, it is the collaborative nature of this district and the teamwork to be able to bring it all together. We focus on technology integration, the actual standards, but it is embedded within our current curriculum, so it plays out daily.
Sons promising signs.
And before I get to the video to show what this looks like across, I think that this one particular quote here from Bill Gates, actually, where "Technology is just a tool. In terms of getting the kids working together and motivating them, the teacher is the most important." And that's what we see each day, and that's what parents were able to see, whether they visited the classrooms for presentations, or whether they came in here into the media center and visited poster sessions where they could see snippets of what takes place in classrooms. So, just to fast forward here to the video, again, this video was captured over several months, it was captured from our three technology integration specialists, as well as some of our teachers coming together, and Deanna Brozio, our middle school technology integration specialist, took all of this raw footage and put it together in a video, and I think that you'll be quite amazed of what is taking place across the district.
Welcome to the Fifth Annual Parent Technology Night. Thank you for coming. The Foxborough Public Schools envisions a compelling pre-K to 12 learning environment in which students and staff have access to technologies that promote 21st century teaching and learning. This environment leverages technology to provide access to authentic learning experiences that maximize student achievement and prepare students to become productive citizens in a competitive global society. Bring your own device, also known as BYOD, allows students to bring personally-owned mobile devices, including laptops, tablets, and smartphones, to school for educational use.
This is my device, bring it to school every day. I have all my school downloads, websites on here, like Old Office 365, OneNote, it's extremely helpful, it's really good for getting homework done and stuff, it works on all the Wi-Fi here too, helps me get stuff done faster, I really, really like carrying around.
Devices in the class, in one sense, like if they have to drop a ball, see how high it bounces back up next to a meter stick, gives them a really good accurate measurement if they do it in slow motion to see exactly how, how high the wall comes back up. I like it for getting good accurate measurements. If I had a survey in class, I'm kind of an exit ticket, we can do it digitally, and the kids will type in their answers on their devices, they show up immediately instead of having to wait until they get home.
Sixth grade students use their own devices in my class to fill public service announcements on the ramifications and the dangers of folium. We took a runner-up award for Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, and I'm very proud of you.
Office 365 provides our community with office applications such as Word, Excel, PowerPoint, OneNote, Outlook, and Sway. These apps can be installed across multiple devices, including PCs, Macs, tablets, and phones. In addition, Office 365 provides online storage with OneDrive and video calling through Skype.
My Office 365, in case, like, you want, even like, a teacher has a question on homework or anything like that, and then you can use OneDrive to go in and see projects, you can just see the normal way you can do it, but you can access it on OneDrive from anywhere.
My dream, instead of having this paper-filled thing, is to have a OneNote notebook filled with all of your ideas, including pictures that you captured, your own, something you can keep forever, and you're about science forever.
And they are, you know, OneNote, because it lets you have a giant screen to work on, and they can paraphrase in the margins, and they don't run out of room in the margins to do their paraphrasing, so they have a giant, like a giant mural to work on to follow and to read.
What we're doing is trying to place, we use QR codes over the school so we can ask for more of Skype, so students can learn directions, directions, stuff like that.
So, one of the online platforms that I enjoy using for my classes called Padlet, and I use that as online bulletin boards, chat rooms, online work submission, as well as web posts. They just double-click, and there they're able to submit files from their computer or links that they can give in.
I like to use Group in my classroom because I think it's a great way to have the kids engaged in their own review, for a test or quiz. Great thing about Group, you know, it does give us a nice data analysis and breakdown. They are actually getting fun, headed in, they're going to scoreboard, and what I've always found very amazing is that some of the most struggling students end up seeing their name on the board, how they're actually making extra skills, helping, it's a wonderful tool to help them get engaged while we often take a chance to assess and make sure they're, they're where they're going to be to meet the bit of testing.
So, lots of different ways technology's used, from the instructional videos, from recording for fluency, and when the first graders are there recording their voices and reading, and they hear themselves, they go back and want to read again and continue with that. So, it's, it is engaging, it's exciting for them, what they're learning in different classrooms. Some of the parents that evening would ask questions, "Is this going on in every classroom?" We teach the same standards and grade levels, but how we approach that is different. We might use technology in one way in one classroom and meet that same standard a different way in another classroom, and the beautiful thing about that is, they're exposed to different ways as they go through each of the grades to technology, and really become proficient in so many different tools, as well as software programs. The one that you saw at the beginning where it was the, they were creating badges, so when you think about online and the badges that you can earn in different ways, whether it's social media, or different games and things, those are, those are the things that our students are doing, and here at the high school. So, it really is some amazing things that they're exposed to, and then what they end up creating in the, the end, and it really is what's enhancing learning.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Very impressive.
Giant leaps.
Giant leaps. I, I agree with the giant leaps, I mean, having gone to all five of the last five parent technology nights, the progress from the first year to this year is just amazing, even the difference in what my now 10th grader was doing in 8th grade, and what my now 8th grader is doing in 8th grade with the same teachers, same curriculum, but the technology has evolved so much in two years, it's, it's, it's very exciting, what is happening, I think, on a daily basis.
And, you know, one of the things that makes me the happiest is that not only have we really come leaps and bounds, thanks, thanks really to this committee and the community who has supported all of our requests to add technology and different pieces, but we've done all that while preserving our focus on teaching and learning. We didn't just say, "We need a new initiative called technology, we're going to buy stuff." So, by maybe taking it a little bit slow the first couple of years, back, you know, before, say, going over the last nine years, that taking it a little bit slowly really helped us preserve that, that idea, that it's to serve up the curriculum, it's not a means or, or an activity or initiative in and of itself, that we really have achieved that goal over, over time.
Well, and I think the committee has supported, you know, the last few years, the addition of the technology integration specialists and, and the supervisor, and that has really led our teachers to be able to blossom in their use of technology. So, adding those positions has really been critical to maximizing the potential, the instructional potential.
Right, totally, it's not just the things, it's the human resource support that must come with the efficient and effective use of the things, not make it just something new, like, "Here you go," when I see Tom, Tom's been around for a while, and that's what we didn't do, which I think is a mistake often that's, because it's kind of exciting and interesting, and, and we, we didn't make that mistake. It might have taken us a little bit longer than we'd hoped, but we got to where we wanted without selling our souls of what we believe in. So, I think that's, I couldn't be prouder.
Steve?
Yeah, Debbie Spinelli brought it up earlier, but I, I think it bears mentioning again or more, that aside from the curriculum that we've done and the excellent work of the implementation, and hopefully, good adoption among the faculty, I think a lot of credit needs to go to Bill Yuchna and to Aaron Hire, who are under your administration, who have, who have produced, you know, a lot of, a lot of the behind-the-scenes, very important and highly technical and sometimes financially complicated implementations of this. These laptops don't grow on trees, and we have to be able to buy them, and, and we've been able to get there, and in the absence of our Chair, Mr. Gardner, I'm sure that there's more to do, but, but it has been a remarkable three years or so in this process.
There's always more to do, but you made me have thought, actually, that because they, they have a vision, Aaron and Bill, for the procurement of the things that we need, we actually haven't increased our capital for technology, we've just repurposed it more flexibly so that we're not buying as many as what you would think of the standard desktop, but we're buying the things we'll really use in the capacity that we believe they should be used, so, so I think that's important to note. It's not that we've necessarily asked for extra on top of what we already have, we're just using the funds that we are lucky enough to get each year in a different way to achieve our goals. So, definitely, that is a big part of it, is to have that vision of what is the priority and what can we do without, or how does that philosophy shift what we hope to get versus what we've traditionally purchased. So, that's been a big help.
Thank you, Amy.
That was great.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Appreciate it.
The work of many.
It was a great night, it was really a great night.
Sure was.
Do you want to stay there?
Sure.
Stay here and...
Want to come?
Mr. Murray up.
So, as you know, Mr. Murray is our department Chair for Social Studies at the high school. Welcome, Tom.
Yes.
It's a really a seat for you.
Yes. I'm here to ask for a new textbook adoption for the AP European History. This has been proposed from two summers ago, when we, we finished off the Social Studies Evaluation, and one of our needs was to find a European History textbook. Mr. Todd Kizer's been teaching this class for over 15 years now, which, I looked up that number, since Kevin McCarthy left, he's taken this class, and he's done some great things with it. He's been using the same textbook throughout, and we, he went to a conference, a one-week conference, two summers ago, and he met a lot of people, he got five or six, I think it was five different textbooks we looked at, and this is the final one that he and I came down with. And the reason why this is going to be such a great textbook is, they adopted this textbook as they made the changes to the text itself, so there's some great resources that go with it.
That's lucky.
The professor who wrote this actually, Mr. Kizer had as a professor at Penn State University, which is only a coincidence, but the, the fact is, this, this is an outstanding textbook, and we're very excited to hopefully adopt this for next year.
And going back to that K-12 Social Studies Review that we did two years ago, actually, when you go back to the timeline that we had proposed for this text, it would have been last year, and I think that speaks to being really thorough and thinking through what exactly do we need in order to make sure that we're best meeting the needs of the students, and we're doing it in a timely fashion, but we're not jumping into it at the same time based on the changes that have happened with the AP College Board.
Yeah, very thoughtful.
Absolutely. So, the total cost for purchasing 50 copies is $6,048?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that would be the high school textbook, that's why, '16 line.
All right. Anybody have any additional questions, comments?
No, I'll make a motion that we appropriate $6,048 for the purchase of this, of the 50 copies of the new history textbook, Advanced Placement European History Textbook.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And thank you.
Exciting.
And thanks again for the technology, because as a classroom teacher, I can't say any of the good stuff. It changes the whole dynamic of the classroom, and the kids are excited, we just did a presidential, "Who was the best president?" We started with McKinley, and we went up right up to the President, and just the kids actively involved, and the kids get to vote through Kahoot, so every kid is involved in this whole process, and it's not me who's making the decision, it's the class who's making the decision. It's, it's really been a game changer, from that to PowerPoint, when one person used to have to develop PowerPoint, then everybody else would take credit for it. It's totally different now, that everybody actively participates, and everybody, because it's online, so you can't kind of fudge your way out of it, everybody has to be involved.
We are hearing that a lot, the student engagement comes a little bit more naturally without the teacher having to work hard on student engagement harder than you have to because they, they want to be involved with it.
Everybody's got it, like, we did one for seniors in pre-economics, and they were reluctant at the beginning, but then they were excited because, "Look, I can't, I gotta do my part of it," and it was really a nice thing, so.
That's a great point.
Kudos, keep it up.
Thank you. I'd be interested, I'd be interested if they did think was the most effective president.
It was, it was John F. Kennedy, and I didn't think, I thought it would be Teddy Roosevelt first, but it was the kids who, who did it, and the kid who ran with it, he was, he was, he was, he was awesome.
Oh, it's great.
Great job.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're a little ahead of schedule, but that's always good, we've got a lot of policy coming up. So, our, our next agenda item is the first reading of three policies. The first one is policy GCCC backslash GDCC, I don't know who titles these, family and medical leave. We'll thank MAS for the lettering process on that.
We don't know who else to thank, quote-unquote.
So, that's, that is the first one, and you have in your packets the current policy, which is quite short, and our, Debbie and I met and discussed this, and went through the very lengthy family leave policy. I think it looks to me that when the policy handbook was initially adopted, this was probably put in as a placeholder, it sort of just references the Family and Medical Leave Act. The new policy really delineates exactly what our employees are entitled to under the Family, Family and Medical Leave Act. So, Debbie, do you want to start with the first reading?
I will start. All right, suggested new policy, GCCC slash GDCC, Family Leave Policy, Family Medical and Small Necessities Leaves of Absence. A, Purpose. The Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA, of 1993 allows eligible employees 12 weeks of unpaid leave, 26 weeks for military caregiver leave, per year, under the circumstances outlined below. Employees may take leave for the following reasons. One, to care for the employee's child after birth, or placement of a child with an employee through adoption or foster care. Two, incapacity due to pregnancy, prenatal, medical care, or childbirth. Three, the employee is needed to care for his or her child, spouse, or parent who has a serious health condition. Four, the employee is unable to perform the functions of his/her position because of a serious health condition. Five, the employee is next of kin to or needed to care for a covered service member who incurred a serious injury or illness in the line of duty, up to 26 weeks of leave. This is an exception to the 12-week maximum referred, referenced throughout policy. Six, the employee needs leave due to a qualifying exigency arising out of his/her child, spouse, or parent, who is also a military member, being called to or serving on covered active duty. B, use paid leave first. Employees are required to use certain types of accrued or available paid leave first as part of the FMLA leave before commencing the unpaid portion of the leave. Employees who take leave because of birth, or placement of a child, or to care for an ill spouse, parent, or child, must first use all accrued vacation and personal time, in that order. Employees who take leave because of their own serious illness must use all accrued sick, personal, and vacation time, in that order.
Debbie, hold up, Mrs. Spinelli pointed out that somehow in our transition, we dropped out a sentence that is important to include in here, I don't know how that happened, but...
There is one sentence missing, the next to the last sentence should say, and, and the reason, I know because we went back...
Before employees who take leave?
Correct.
Yes.
So, this is a policy recommended by our own, your own school committee attorney, and the sentence that is missing says contractual family sick leave must be used if an employee is out to care for an ill family member.
Contract, again, slowly, please.
So, it addresses, and that comes before...
Employees who take leave because of their own...
Their own serious illness, so...
Could you do it once more, please?
Sure. Contractual family sick leave must be used if an employee is out to care for an ill family member.
That's a good catch, and it must have just dropped out in our editing, but I'm so glad that you remembered that. Thank you. Janet, do you have that?
Yeah.
All right.
I have that copied.
Perfect. Thank you. Debbie, do you want me to take over the next bit of reading, or would you like to continue?
Sure. Well, why don't you do it, and then we'll swap back and forth, so that one, one voice will not drone on for all these pages.
It is long.
C.
C eligibility, one, 1,250 hours in previous 12 months. To be eligible for leave under this policy, an employee must have been employed by the employer for a total of at least 12 months, and must have worked at least 1,250 hours during the 12-month period preceding the commencement of the leave. Certain exceptions may apply if an employee has... Certain exceptions may apply if an employee has had a break in service with the employer totaling seven or more years unless the break was due to certain types of military leave. D, conditions. One, 12 weeks. Employees may take no more than 12 weeks of leave in a 12-month period. The 12-month period is a rolling 12 months, beginning 12 months prior to the proposed commencement of the requested leave. If both spouses are employed by the employer, they are together entitled to a total of 12 weeks of leave for the birth or placement of a child or care of a sick parent. Two, notice. Employees wishing to take FMLA leave must give 30 days' notice for leave involving foreseeable events. If the event giving rise to the need for leave is not foreseeable, then the employee must give such notice as is practicable under the circumstances. Employees must schedule planned medical treatments with due regard for the employer's operational needs. E, definitions. Healthcare provider, a doctor of medicine or osteopathy, who is authorized to practice medicine or surgery as appropriate by the state in which the doctor practices or any other person determined by the secretary to be capable of providing healthcare services. Parent, the biological parent of an employee or an individual who stood in loco parentis to an employee when the employee was a son or daughter. Reduced leave schedule. A leave schedule that reduces the usual number of hours per work week or hours per work day of an employee. Secretary, the Secretary of Labor. Serious health condition, an illness, injury, impairment, or physical or mental condition that involves inpatient care in a hospital, hospice, or residential medical care facility or continuing treatment by a healthcare provider. Child, a biological, adopted, or foster child, a stepchild, a legal ward, or a child of a person standing in loco parentis who is under 18 years of age or 18 years of age or older and incapable of self-care because of a mental or physical disability. Spouse, an individual's legal husband or wife. Covered active duty, in the case of a member of a regular component of the Armed Forces' duty during the deployment of the member with the Armed Forces to a foreign country; and in the case of a member of the Reserve Component of the Armed Forces' duty during the deployment of the member with the Armed Forces to a foreign country, under a call or order to active duty under a provision of law referred to as Section 101a13b of Title 10, United States Code. Sorry.
It's a long name.
Covered service member, a member of the Armed Forces, including a member of the National Guard or Reserves, who is undergoing medical treatment, recuperation, or therapy, or is otherwise in outpatient status, or is otherwise on the Temporary Disability Retired List for a serious injury or illness; or a veteran who is undergoing medical treatment, recuperation, or therapy for a serious injury or illness, or who was a member of the Armed Forces, including a member of the National Guard or Reserves, at any time during the period of five years preceding the date on which the veteran undergoes that medical treatment, recuperation, or therapy. Next of kin, with respect to an individual, next of kin is the nearest blood relative of that individual. Qualifying exigency, excuse me, may include attending certain military events, arranging for alternative childcare, addressing certain financial and legal arrangements, attending certain counseling sessions, and attending post-deployment reintegration briefing. Serious injury or illness, in the case of a member of the Armed Forces, including a member of the National Guard or Reserves, an injury or illness that was incurred by the member in the line of duty, on active duty in the Armed Forces, or existed before the beginning of the member's active duty and was aggravated by service in line of duty on active duty in the Armed Forces, and that may render the member medically unfit to perform the duties of the member's office grade, rank, or rating; and in the case of a veteran who was a member of the Armed Forces, including a member of the National Guard or Reserves, at any time during such a period a qualifying, as defined by the Secretary of Labor, injury or illness that was incurred by the member in line of duty on active duty in the Armed Forces, or existed before the beginning of the member's active duty and was aggravated by service in line of duty on active duty in the Armed Forces, and that manifested itself before or after the member became a veteran. Whew. Okay. F?
This is not for the faint-hearted.
No, but it really does spell it all out.
It does.
It's right there. If anyone has a question about how we would deal with these issues, it does delineate everything. F, certification. Employees must provide sufficient information for the employer to determine if the leave may qualify for FMLA protection. In the anticipated timing and duration of the leave, employees requesting FMLA leave must provide medical certification to support a claim for leave for an employee's own serious health condition or to care for a seriously ill child, spouse, or parent. The medical certification must set forth the date on which serious health condition commenced, the serious health condition commenced, the probable duration of the condition, and the appropriate medical facts within the knowledge of the healthcare provider regarding the condition. In its discretion, the employer may require a second medical opinion and periodic recertification at its own expense. Employer responsibilities. The employer will inform employees requesting leave whether they are eligible under the FMLA. The employer will also inform employees what, if any, additional information is needed to process their request. Employees will be notified of the approval or denial of the leave and the reasons therefore. The employer shall not interfere with, restrain, or deny the exercise of any right provided under the FMLA and shall not take any adverse employment action against an employee for opposing any practice made unlawful by the FMLA or for involvement in any proceeding under or relating to the FMLA. Debbie, you want to take over?
I will take over. H, intermittent or reduced schedule leave. If medically necessary for a serious health condition or qualifying exigency of the employee or his or her spouse, child, or parent, will may be taken on the intermittent or reduced leave schedule. If leave is requested on this basis, the employer may require the employee to transfer temporarily to a position with equivalent compensation which better accommodates recurring periods of absence or part-time schedule. I, benefits. One, health coverage. Employees on leave are entitled to the continuance of group health coverage under the same conditions they received coverage prior to the leave. Employees who contribute to their health insurance premiums via payroll deduction must arrange to pay the premium contributions during the period of unpaid absence if they wish to retain coverage. In the event that an employee elects not to return to work upon completion of an improved unpaid leave of absence, the employer may recover from the employee the cost of any payments made to maintain the employee's coverage unless the failure to return to work was beyond reasons of the employee's control. Two, other benefits. Benefits based upon the length of service will be calculated as of the last paid workday prior to the start of the FMLA leave of absence. Employees do not accrue sick, vacation, or personal time while on leave in excess of 30 days. Employees will not forfeit any employment benefits that accrued prior to the start of the FMLA leave of absence. Under J, sick leave, work as compensation leave, or other absences. Employees who are out of work for reasons that would qualify for leave under this policy, irrespective of whether the leave has been requested under this policy, are required, upon request, to provide to the employer the information and certifications required by this policy. The employer shall designate all such qualifying leave as family and medical leave, which shall run against the 12 weeks allowed under this policy. K, return to work. Employees returning from FMLA leave in accordance with this policy will be restored to their original positions or to equivalent positions with equivalent pay and benefits. Employees should contact the Personnel Department and their supervisors at least two weeks before their return date to make arrangements. Employees may be required to provide a medical opinion from a physician certifying their fitness for duty. The employer reserves the right to send an employee to the employer's physician for a second opinion regarding the employee's fitness to work. L, procedural requirements. Employees returning, requesting, excuse me, I'm beginning it. Employees requesting an FMLA leave must submit the request in writing to their department head. Request should be made 30 days in advance of the commencement of the leave, but in any event, as soon as practicable. The employee will provide, the employer will provide an employee with a certification of healthcare provider form. The employee must return the completed form to the employer within 15 days from receipt.
Want me to take over?
Sure.
This one's a monster. It's just long. M, rules specific to teachers. Leave taken near the end of an academic term, the following rules shall apply with respect to periods of leave near the conclusion of an academic term in the case of any eligible employee employed principally in an instructional capacity. Leave more than five weeks prior to end of term. If the employee begins leave more than five weeks prior to the end of the academic term, the employer may require the employee to continue taking leave until the end of such term if the leave is of at least three weeks' duration and the return to employment would occur during the three-week period before the end of such term. Leave less than five weeks prior to the end of term. If the employee begins leave with less than five weeks remaining in the academic term, the employer may require the employee to continue taking leave until the end of such term if the leave is of greater than two weeks' duration and the return to employment would occur during the two-week period before the end of such term. Leave less than three weeks prior to end of term. If the employee begins leave with less than three weeks remaining in the academic term, the employer may require the employee to continue to take leave until the end of such term. Intermittent or reduced leave, reduced schedule leave. In any case in which an eligible employee employed principally in an instructional capacity requests intermittent or reduced schedule leave that is foreseeable based on planned medical treatment, and the employee would be on leave for greater than 20% of the total number of working days in the period during which the leave would extend, the agency or school may require that such employee elect either to take period, to take leave for periods of a particular duration, not to exceed the duration of the planned medical treatment, or to transfer temporarily to an available alternative position offered by the employer for which the employee is qualified and that has equivalent pay and benefits and better accommodates recurring periods of leave than the regular employment position of the employee. And small necessities leave. One, the Small Necessities Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 149, Section 52d, became effective on August 4, 1998. Two, an employee shall be entitled to a total of 24 hours of unpaid leave during a 12-month period. The 12-month period is a rolling 12 months, beginning 12 months prior to the proposed commencement of requested leave, in addition to leave available under the Family and Medical Leave Act of 1993, for the following purposes. A, to participate in school activities directly related to the educational advancement of a son or daughter. B, to accompany the son or daughter of an employee to routine medical or dental appointments, such as checkups or vaccinations. And C, to accompany an elderly relative of the employee to routine medical or dental appointments or appointments for other professional services related to the elders' care. Three, employees who have accumulated sick, personal, or vacation time must use such time as part of the 24 hours before becoming eligible for unpaid time. The employer will not provide paid leave in any situation where it would not normally provide such paid leave. For at least seven days in advance, the employee shall submit to the employer a written notice of his/her intent to take small necessities leave and the date and expected duration of the leave. If seven days' notice is not possible, the employee shall give notice as soon as practicable. Reference is 29 U.S.C., Section 2601 et cec, 29 CFR, Part 825 et cec, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 149, Section 52d. Any questions?
I just have one.
Yes.
Don't apologize.
On page two.
Yes.
G1. So they're saying if a husband and wife had a baby, they could only do it combined 12 weeks? They don't, why don't they get the individual?
That's the way the law is.
That's the state law?
Yes. Well, it's the federal law.
Federal law.
Yes. That is true. They must share the available time if they're both employees.
Right.
Of the same employer.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to clarify that.
That's good to clarify. Steve?
Yes, this is rich and thorough, and thank you for all the work you both did on it. I have no criticism of it at all. I just have a couple of questions.
Do our best.
Page one, letter C, eligibility. And we can answer these later or in another reading or whatever. I'm not trying to pin.
We can answer them now.
Pin anybody down. But when it describes the number of hours, in this case, 1,250, since we have a school year, is it the contracted year of, say, some members of our school system, say, the union members versus non-members? Because you have breaks, right?
Right. But they're actually employed for 12 months.
Are they accumulated? Okay, that helps. So they're in the bubble.
The contracts are year-round, just that the work year is shorter than the contractual year. But this actually is the federal law, that you have to have been employed for at least 12 months and have to work at least that minimum number of hours in order to be eligible for FMLA.
Thank you. I think you got me right in there, Debbie, right to answer my question. Yeah, the page two, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure. Please go on, Steve.
Item two.
Under D?
Under D, yeah. This is based on my inexperience with this law. Is there flexibility with, say, the administration, whoever is the stakeholder, on helping the employee work through what scheduled planned medical treatments are with regard for the employer's operational needs? So I'm not going to mention any fictional, you know, medical conditions, but there's got to be something in the human condition where the person has to go for it. And is it captured somewhere else, or I don't know?
I don't know that it needs to be because we have several people, a few people a year that have to take FMLA.
Sure.
And the way it actually works is sounds, is more straightforward than some of the detailed language may lead one to believe. But basically, what that section says is that, about scheduled planned medical treatments, that if you have a need or immediate family member has a need, that you know the scheduled, what the schedule of treatment is, then yes, you work with the employer to say, okay, that's actually a better situation than sometimes not knowing what is being faced.
Great.
So because then you're a little more predictable about what's going to happen and have a little bit more of a plan to cover.
So in other words, we're on top of it, so thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Those are good questions, though, because FMLA has been a federal law for a few decades. So, as you can see. So it is, it's just that our policy sort of just referenced it.
Sure.
It said, we'll comply with it.
Right.
And so if you were an employee looking to see what the benefits were, you would have to then go somewhere else. So the benefit of having it all here is you can see it right in the Foxville School Committee policy manual.
Steve, on that one, though, I think to answer your question in the last sentence, planned medical treatments are like if I'm going to have knee surgery, towards at my schedule, my wish to have done.
I see, electivey type things.
Right. It's not talking about an emergency surgery or a need that one.
Got it. Thank you.
Or if it's a treatment where you're going to be ill for a few days each time, for example, maybe some have been through that.
Right. I was thinking, well, like if the Band-Aid falls off and they have to go.
Then you wouldn't necessarily want to schedule it on a Monday, and then you'd only come back in on Friday. So, you know, typically, people will pick a Thursday or Friday. So that, it's kind of those situations that, it's mutually agreeable. Like, this would work for you, this would work for us, let's come up with something that seems to be of mutual benefit.
Sure. And then finally, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead, Steve.
Page five, letter, item L. It references that the request should be made 30 days in advance with the commencement of the leave, but in any event, as soon as practicable, and the employer will provide... I don't know. Oh, I know. Is there any language that we need or have already that, once the employee submits... Is there any language that we need or have already that, once the employee submits whatever submission it is to the administration, that the administration is required to act within 24, 48, 36 days, weeks, hours, whatever?
Yes, the cover form.
So it doesn't sit in an in-basket somewhere and catch anybody?
Oh, no, the cover form says you are or are not eligible. The minute we get it, we send it right out. And it says you are or you are not eligible, and it's, and then it's sent back to the person.
Great, thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it.
All great questions, great questions.
Yeah, really.
Well, really, I mean, what this does, it is, our old policy that we're getting rid of said that, well, we're not getting rid of it, that we're amending at length, said the superintendent shall issue and from time to time amend regulations setting forth the rights and procedures granted by the act. That's really what we're doing here. It took a little while to get there, this was '08, and we're in '16, but I think this is a thorough delineation of everybody's rights.
It can't be much more thorough.
No, it's a heavy lift, you did a lot of work, thank you.
So with the inclusion of that one sentence, I think we've gone through and vetted the new policy.
Correct.
Hopefully Bruce won't.
And that is the version that your attorney is recommending.
That's right.
And for your consideration.
Have we read on that tonight, or is this?
No, this is the first reading.
Oh, it's the first reading?
But what I would like to do is, I'd like to make a motion that we move this policy, family leave policy as amended forward for a second reading.
Yes. Thank you.
Second?
Would anyone like to second that?
I will.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Four, zero. All right, so we'll move that forward for a second reading at our next meeting. The next policy is Student Activity Accounts, J.J.F. You may remember that back in December, Mr. Yufna brought to our attention the need to set some limits on the funds to be included in the student activity accounts, and we voted in December to have a $25,000 limit at the high school and $20,000 at the middle school. The MAS-C had some policy suggestions, changes based on the Massachusetts law, so Bevy and I took a look at the MAS-C suggested changes and have incorporated those into our policy on student activity accounts. And it's not quite as long, it's a little bit long, but it's not quite as long.
And these regulations have changed.
They have changed.
And become a little bit more, I know Bill could speak to it more eloquently than I could, but they definitely have become more regulated and more accountability is built in, in more clearly defined requirements.
And I think that's reflected in what the suggested language from MAS-C is. And so I asked Bill to take a look at it and give us his thoughts tonight, and I guess we'll just start. Bevy, do you want to start?
Sure, and this one is the long-range strategic planning.
No, it's the student activity accounts.
Student account activities. File J.J.F. Student funds may be raised to finance the activities of authorized student organizations. Student activity funds are considered a part of the total fiscal operation of the Foxborough Public Schools and are subject to policies established by the Foxborough School Committee and of the Office of the Superintendent. The funds shall be, this is added, only for the benefit of the students and, that's inserted in our old language, managed in accordance with the Sound of Business practices, which include accepted budgetary, this is new, and internal control practices. The Superintendent will ensure that annually all principals and student organizations receive a copy of this policy as well as a copy of established procedures for control of receipts and expenditures that meet or exceed DESE guidelines. In compliance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 47, the Foxborough School Committee, one, arises, authorizes the principals to accept money for organized student activity organizations which currently exist, or as from time to time may be revised. This is new, quote, "All funds received for the student activities must be deposited into the Student Activity Agency Account, and no funds shall be directly deposited to a Student Activity Checking Account except for the Student Activity Agency Account," unquote. Two, authorizes the town treasurer to establish and maintain a Student Activity Agency Account or accounts, which is to be audited as part of the town's annual audit. The interest is that earned, the interest that is earned on such accounts shall be maintained by the agency account and distributed annually among the Student Activity Checking Accounts as directed by the regulations established by the Foxborough School Committee Policy.
Bevy, I'm going to jump in because Bill, with this next one, because Bill had given me a couple changes, and I've made them on my copy here, so I might as well jump in with the reading. Three, authorizes student activity checking accounts for use by the principals with specific maximum balances established by each school, for each school by Foxborough School Committee Policy. This is new, payments for expenditures shall be made whenever possible by check, debit, or EFT directly from the student activity, that should say agency account, not checking, agency account.
Our agents.
Should say Student Activity Agency Account.
Thank you.
That was a good catch by Bill. Reimbursements to personal credit card holders shall require the prior authorization of the superintendent. Signatory authorization for student activity checking accounts shall be restricted to the principal, and it should say assistant principal, and then strike the parenthetical reference to superintendent or treasurer.
So, okay.
Strike the principal and assistant principal.
Period, and then that parenthetical should come out. Student activity checking accounts shall be audited annually in accordance with DESE guidelines. Four, directs principals to provide the treasurer with a bond in an amount agreeable to the treasurer. Five, this is new, shall annually, prior to the start of each school year, vote to establish or change the maximum balance that may be on deposit in each student activity checking account.
Oh, so I have a question.
Yes.
So this should be on our radar for annually.
Annually.
Annually, you're going to review, sort of like you do the curriculum use, like you're going to revisit what are the maximum balances allowed on each student activity checking account? Do you want to keep them the same? Do you want to expand them? So every year, they're going to revisit that?
Yeah, but it does say prior to the start of each school year. Again, this was the recommended language based on the changes in the law, so we should put it on our calendar for the end of August. And I mean, as long as Bill is satisfied that the two recommended amounts of $25,020, if something changes over the summer, then we can revisit those amounts then, but that's a good catch. For accounts with limits that exceed $25,000, the Massachusetts Department of Education recommends that districts consider an audit constructed by an outside, conducted by an outside accounting firm, my eyes are failing me, every, and strike two to it, just every three years.
So I now have another question. So just as a matter, that language was always in there?
That language was always in there.
So just as a matter of being consistent, the Massachusetts Department of Education is now called the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education?
Yes, so that, we should say DESE, which is, that is a good catch.
Elementary and secondary education.
You can read these things over and over again.
Well, I have read this once, and I, but as you're reading it aloud, I hear it a little better, and it makes me think, so.
Well, and this was the 2008.
You tend to skim over familiar words.
Nope, that's perfect. So, so change Massachusetts Department of Education to DESE, because that is what we've referenced.
Spell it out fully.
Or spell it out, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is fine.
Well, we should probably spell it out in the first reference, which is up at the top, in the first paragraph, so we should meet or exceed Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, parentheses, DESE. And then we can just refer to DESE.
Great, that's.
Right.
That's perfect.
That's the best way.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, on the same item, if I may. And Bill, maybe you can answer this. It says, whatever the name of the organization you just changed, I'm sorry, a little blurry on that one. They use the verb recommends that the districts. My question is, do we do that, or are we going to do that, or do we not know yet at this time?
The guidelines basically state that to do an internal review for the first two years, and then on the third year, the outside auditing firm has to do the audit. So effectively, it's being audited each year, it's just one every three years is actually done by an outside firm.
Okay, I didn't know if the magic word shell to use, the power of.
Because the policy basically for us has just been put in place, so we won't do that probably for another year.
Okay, thank you.
It does not force you to do it, though.
Right.
It's saying, recommends that you consider. And so basically what they're saying is, this is good practice.
Right.
If you don't do it, and you have a problem, it's on you. So that's really what they're saying, by recommends every three years.
But ironically, they also put it, if you don't do it, they'll put it in your annual audit. It's now going to be a footnote that you're not doing it.
Oh, okay, so it'll be.
But we are doing this, so.
So the law itself doesn't force you to, but what they're saying is, you better do it as.
Yep, I was just bringing it home, Steve, thank you.
No, good point, Steve. This whole next section is new and was recommended by MAS-C. Graduating class funds, funds held on behalf of graduating classes are to be held within the Student Activity Checking Account for the high school. Such funds shall be designated by the class year, classes' year of graduation, such as class of 1998, et cetera. Once a class has graduated from high school, their funds should be removed from the high school's Student Activity Checking Account no later than two years from the date of graduation. It is the responsibility of the class officers to arrange for these funds to be removed from the high school activity checking account. When requested, and all out, and once all outstanding financial obligations of the graduating class have been met, the remaining balance should be removed from the fund by check transfer payable to the class of XXXS. Checks payable to individual members of the graduating class are not permitted. Should the class officers not request to have their funds removed from the Student Activity Checking Account within two years of their graduating, the funds will be forfeited by the class and transferred into the general sub-fund portion of the Student Activity Agency Account. These funds will then be allocated by a vote of the school committee. The source is MAS-C, March 2016. The legal references are Mass. General Law's Chapter 71, Section 47, as amended, and this should say as amended by Chapter 66 of the Acts of 1996.
You skipped one last sentence there.
I did?
Yeah. Class officers, the final sentence. Class officers should be given a copy of this policy during the course of their senior year to ensure their knowledge of their obligations to perform under this policy.
I was working off a different copy, I don't know why.
Oh, you're just getting tired, then.
No, I actually don't have that.
So Bev read it in, is that?
I just.
Class officers should be given a copy of this policy during the course of their senior year to ensure their knowledge of their obligations to perform under this policy. Thank you, Bev. See, this is, we have too many different, I don't know how that happened, Bevy. I had a different copy that I was working off.
That's okay, as long as we all are aware of it.
Yep, no, that's the one we should be, all right.
One more question, Madam Chair, for the subject matter experts, probably Bill or Deb. Is there any language we need to have, or is it an accounting practice already in place that defines the accounts that the monies are held in so that, say, principal is, principal being the monies, are not at risk for loss, like instead of, you know, investment accounts or something like that, just as checking, but?
This, all, well, there's the two funds that exist. One is the agency fund, which is actually controlled by the town's treasurer or collector, it's not controlled by anybody on the school side. That is where the primary source of money is supposed to be, that's where all deposits go to. The Student Activity Checking Account is what's actually under the control of the principal or assistant principal within the building, and that's the one that has the limitations of the 2025. That is strictly in a checking account, that's interest-bearing, not being invested, other than the interest on the account.
No risk to principal, that's.
No. However, the other money is commingled with all town revenues and sources, so therefore, if they're investing the money out, they're investing this money as well out, but they always obviously keep a liquid, you know, portion for us.
Thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions?
The only comment I will make on this, that I'm uncomfortable with, but it's state law, so we will obviously have to deal with it. And I actually think, and I apologize because I don't have my copy with me right here, but I don't believe the state law allows for the two-year holding of the money. I believe it's actually down to either six or nine months. But the problem I have with that is, in many cases, we have graduating classes that are graduating with $5,000 to $10,000, which they are specifically graduating with to have for their five-year reunion. And I have a real problem personally giving $5,000 to $10,000 to a, you know, 18-year-old that basically, you know, would have to open an account under their social security number because it can no longer be under any of, you know, the town-valued accounts, and dispersing it. So we typically have seen that the funds stay in our accounts for the five years, and at the five-year time, they usually clear them out, because that's what they're using to do as their seed money for their reunion, at which point, obviously, I have no concerns that it's gone, it's not in our control anymore. But I think the state law really does not anticipate that some of these classes will have the size balances they have. It'd be different if it was a $500 or a $1,000 account, but I have seen $10,000, $12,000 still in some of these accounts.
So what do we do with that?
I've actually put a call into our state legislators just to say, you really need to really think this one out, because I think this is a problem.
Absolutely.
You know, personally don't think that you're, if you were thinking that these kids are graduating with a $500, you know, thing, that's not the case. And that's not, and Foxborough's not unusual, this is, I've talked to a lot of the towns around us, and they're the same exact situation, and I'm sure some towns are far more than that. So, you know.
This was the language that was recommended from MAS-C. We currently have nothing in our policy on graduating class funds, so I think for, I mean, at least absent a change in the law, this is, and maybe MAS-C put the two years in, thinking along the same lines that you did. I think for now, at least, this is a good way to go, but we should keep an eye on it and, you know, make sure we're giving our students the best advice possible when they graduate.
I mean, isn't it under our purview if we realize that that is really happening, that we could recommend, under this particular circumstance, that it stays until the five year? No?
It's not the state law.
Well, what's interesting is, I think you might get away, and I kept rereading this when you got to it, but where it basically says that you will take control of it, and put it into a general sub-fund portion of the Student Activity Account, which technically doesn't exist by state law, but anyways, we put it there, you could decide not to do anything with it for five years, and then disperse it to five years. So you could effectively use their own wording, if this, you know, is valid, you could use their own wording to just keep it there, it just, you know, wouldn't be under the class of '98, but we would keep track of what the class of '98 had, type of thing, so.
So we could, we can work around this, for the benefit of the class.
I, with this wording, you could, I think.
Okay. Well, this is our first reading, so we'll maybe all give this some more thought.
What are we going to call that, the mattress strategy? The mattress strategy, like put it in your mattress.
So far, it's been really fun, so, you know.
I just don't think they thought through the individual, you know, the effect on the individual, it could even affect somebody's financial aid, for example, you don't know. So I think, I think that that's definitely part of it, that I think they, until the scenarios actually happen, and I think at some point, they'll say, oh, oh gee.
We need to fix this, right.
But at least we have, we have the phrase that, of the sub, whatever it was, the sub-account. We can massage that.
It just says, remove it from high school and take possession.
Right, so we can massage that a little.
Maybe we could get some feedback from our student, our class advise, well, I was going to say the class advisors on this.
I think as long as it's the state law now, I don't think it will do any good, because we already feel that way, so I just don't know, I'm sure they'll agree with us, but I think it's just questionable, let us do a little bit more digging about how other people handling that, and how do you advise the kids about how to best take control of the money without impacting yourself as an individual college student, so.
Well, maybe we can come up with some guidance.
Maybe we'll have more information a month from now, but I don't, I just don't know if people have figured out that.
Well, this is the recommended language.
Yes, all good points on that. We have one more policy.
Well, actually, I would like to recommend that this policy, the student accounts, the student activity accounts filed J.J.F., be moved forward for a second reading with the additions of our corrections and amendments.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Okay, one more. This one's short and sweet. This was just something, this is a housekeeping matter that, as we were flipping through our policy manual, we noticed that our policy on long-range strategic planning was not up-to-date with our actual practice, so that's, we're just trying to bring. So that's, we're just trying to bring this policy in line with what we have actually been doing over the last five years now, I think.
Something like that, yeah, five years.
So this is file ADAA, Long-Range Strategic Planning. A key element of effective management of a school system is the use of long-range plans. Long-range strategic planning is strongly supported in the research related to the management of education. The Foxborough School Committee and Superintendent share the responsibility for setting direction for Foxborough Public Schools. Long-range strategic planning is the primary process for affecting long-term direction. The Foxborough School Department is committed to the concept of long-range strategic planning. This planning is focused on the major components of the school system as recommended by the superintendent. This concept will be implemented in the school system as a result of the following process. A long-range strategic plan will be developed to include a three, change from five to three-year period. The plan will be prepared by the superintendent and recommended to the Foxborough School Committee for approval. And when they're gonna strike the sentence, the plan will be reviewed and revised yearly. The superintendent will provide the school committee with an annual update on the plan's progress. The superintendent will ensure appropriate staff and community participation in the development of the plan. The timeline for development, presentation, and approval of the plan is as follows. I'm gonna strike the original A and insert A. Six months prior to the expiration of the current three-year plan, the superintendent will form a strategic planning work group consisting of administrators, staff, and community members. And we'll strike the second, the B, and insert B. A draft will be submitted to the school committee for review and final approval. And that is that. And we'll strike C. Basically, A, B, and C had to do with five-year plans, which were not working, I mean, were not doing.
No.
Because we went to the three-year plan, which is, is working for us, I think, a more effective way to plan. So, does anybody have any questions?
I think that was good tweaking.
It's a housekeeping thing and a tweaking just to make sure what we say we're doing is based on what we're actually doing.
I move to accept the long-range strategic planning with the amendments made.
To move it forward for a second reading?
Yep, please.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Okay. Well, we're done with the policy portion of the meeting. Moving on to the BIKO quarterly update, Mrs. Penelope.
Okay, so four times a year, hence the name, quarterly update. An update from our Bi-County Collaborative, which is our member collaborative for special education programming that we, we do send a few kids to every year, and we are a member district. So this particular update contains information regarding referrals and enrollment, status of the budget for BIKO for FY sixteen, parent information events, regional training, and an upcoming transition expo. So just to elaborate on a couple of those, their referrals and enrollment are continuing to increase with the backup in terms of the collaborative to where they typically are, this time every year, which is close to twenty, they have one hundred and ninety-six students. They have had more growth in the elementary programs that they run. They have been providing, which I think is a really good thing, they've been expanding other services to districts other than just, here are some programs, you need to understand, you pay us tuition, which is the traditional bulk of the activity. But they've really expanded things in the area of home-based services that are really of help to districts. After-school programming, kids who need that for an extended day, and professional development of interest to the member districts. And some examples of that have been that they've been providing, you know, some sheltered English immersion training, special education content training, and other similar things that our faculty is looking for as well. They have tried to begin some parent education programs, which typically doesn't exist in a collaborative that big. But they, for example, they mentioned Signs of Suicide Information Night, which is a program that's used in most of our schools, as included. And they are now using that for that. And of, I think particularly interest of families of, of students with disabilities is that they're gonna be holding a financial, family financial planning night on April, oh, that was April sixth, so this has already gone by, to help families really with topics about guardianship, preservation of eligibility of government benefits and entitlement, building financial solutions and legal planning. So I hope that they do run that every year because I think a lot of people are interested in that. And they do get that type of information when we have transition night that we run. They are running their own transition night, as you also see, but we do transition night in, in collaboration with area districts as well. So those are very helpful family events where you can learn about all kinds of things that you need to set your child up for adulthood and transition to future career. And I think those things that they've been doing certainly have expanded the services for all of us who belong, so I think that's great.
Do we need to move to accept this?
Yes, accept.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Of course, Steve.
The last item was the Transitions Expo. Are we participating in that as a school district in any way or attending it?
No, because we have our own.
Okay.
This is, Bi-County has, well, we, there's, I think, eight, at this point, maybe seventeen member districts, it's quite big. So they, this is the first time they're co-hosting their own with their own vendors and everything. But Foxborough actually runs their own, and we move it around. Sometimes it's in Alabot or Norton, Foxborough, we host a lot. We do all the, the booth setups, we often run it here. So we already have our own, and they have, rather than relying on all their member districts to have their own transition night or in partnership like we do regionally, they are now starting to run their own so that they fill the gap in case they have member communities that don't and families that need that information, but.
It's, it's good to see other organizations again rise to the Foxborough standard.
Yes, it is. So I think, you know, if some families couldn't make ours, they could go to this one. So it's, but it's typically for families of students who are attending the BIKO program, although we have our own and they're welcome to come to.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Deb.
Will we have a motion? Do we have a second? Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, to accept the BIKO quarterly update. Thank you, Mrs. Penelope. Okay, we are back on schedule.
We are.
On our agenda.
Awesome.
And we are at eight twenty-five, acceptance of donations, and we have several.
We do have several, and several of them are from the Partners in Patriotism Fund. In fact, this was on me, I forgot to ask about the first one, maybe, oh, it says recess equipment, thank goodness, the check says what it is. So this is, I'm asking the committee to accept a donation from the Partners in Patriotism Fund of, in the amount of five hundred dollars to the John J. O'Hearn Middle School for recess equipment. And that would be going into their gift account.
Motion to accept with much gratitude. Are we doing all three?
I would do them separately.
I think we accept them separately, yes. Debbie seconded, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you for the donation of five hundred dollars for recess equipment, John O'Hearn.
Right, also from the New England Patriots Partners in Patriotism Fund, a donation to Foxborough High School in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars for their tower garden project. So many of you are familiar with the, the tower garden project that we have at the Taylor School, where we're growing our own food. Oh, I should go over to the Taylor School and see it. They've been doing that for almost two years now. So they're growing their own greens and vegetables and all kinds of things right in the, in the cafeteria at the Taylor School. And our goal has been to increase this to other schools. And we actually did get a donation of some of the towers about a year ago from Patriot Place, who used to have them up near where Tasting's used to be. And they weren't being used, so they actually gave us five towers, which we happily took. And now this is also, there are other equipment pieces needed for the tower, so this is to help with the garden project so that we can start growing food at many or most of our schools.
Fantastic.
Can I leave anything else? And that's, you know, that grant was written by Allison Johnson, our food service director.
I move to accept the check in the amount of three thousand four hundred for the Tower Garden Project from the Partners in Patriotism Fund with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you.
So just, for example, certain specialized lights are required, so the towers have been great, we didn't have to purchase them, but as we all know, green things require light.
I remember the potatoes, I thought that was fascinating.
Yeah.
That's awesome, very generous.
So once again, from the New England Patriots Partners in Patriotism Fund, they have made a donation to Foxborough High School in the amount of one thousand dollars to the Foxborough High School Theater Guild, or also commonly known as the Drama Club, for their METG performance.
Is that the one they just won at, when they competed?
I think that's the, the competition performance. Yeah, I just don't know what, I feel like I should know what the letters stand for, but Theater Guild is T. You know what, I thought, I think it's N E. Massachusetts. Is something of Theater Guild, it's, it's this, anyway, it's a Theater Guild.
Wow.
I just can't call up the E.
That is fantastic.
Usually I'm good at acronyms, but.
Bev, do we know what that E is?
I'm sorry.
Massachusetts.
If Macal was here, she could tell us.
Something of Theater Guild.
Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, and it's on the internet, so it must be true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That wireless is just coming in handy.
Those gizmos.
I never thought of that, actually.
Do we have a motion?
I will motion that we accept the one thousand dollars so graciously donated by Partners in Patriotism for the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild.
There you go.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you. Okay.
You know, just before we move on, those three alone from Partners in, it's, it's so nice to see how many, what a varied variety of things they support. So they'll support theater programs, they support healthy foods in our food service, and recreation, the recess equipment. It really, you know, they, they really, very generous on a variety of things.
Well, and our students in, in Decca, we accepted a very generous donation from the Partners in Patriotism Fund for that at our last meeting.
You what? I think profusely.
Yes, exactly.
We all do, so, very generous.
Speaking of generous.
Yes.
We have a donation from Raytheon Corporation in the amount of one thousand dollars to the John J. O'Hearn Middle School for the, it says, they, they don't, it says, this is in honor of, they didn't specify exactly what it's for, but Diane McDonough, and she actually has received an award in the past. Diane McDonough, one of our middle school science teachers, was one of six finalists for the two thousand fifteen STEM Science, Technology, and Engineering Mathematics Teacher of the Year. So this is in honor of that. So it's donated to her school, where she is a member of the faculty, for their use if, for whatever way the school would like to use that to honor her.
The letter says that, that the finalist, the five thousand dollars will be used for the STEM, for STEM education. So I, it doesn't say, doesn't specify STEM education for this, but it does say more than what's.
Right. The winner will be announced and honored. She wasn't the winner.
Right.
But she was, I guess we maybe consider her a semifinalist.
Yeah.
So I think, so the winner clearly got five thousand dollars, but the semifinalist, if you will.
Their school gets a donation.
Of a thousand. Right.
Well, I'd like to accept with gratitude the Raytheon donation of one thousand dollars in support of the STEM program at the O'Hearn School.
I second that.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All in favor? Zero.
And you know what would have been nice if I thought of, I'm gonna read, um, don't, Diane McDonough, we know, she's a very creative science teacher. She has been teaching in Massachusetts for thirteen years. She teaches sixth grade math and science. If you remember her, she was in eighth grade science, and she moved down to sixth to do both math and science at the middle school. She co-founded her school's robotics program and the Lego League competitive team. She is also a STEM instructor at Milton Academy Saturday Program for Gift and Tell students in grades forty-eight, and she was the two thousand thirteen Norfolk County Teacher of the Year. She is quite a talented individual, so.
Congratulations to Ms. McDonough.
Terrific.
And thank you to Raytheon for the donation. All's good. Okay. All right, it being eight thirty. Now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies with union personnel, Foxborough Extended Day Staff, the committee, I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Yes, roll call.
Yeah, we'll be right, right, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Debbie?
Uh, aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the committee is going to go into executive session. We will return to open session.
Around ten of nine, something like that?
Around ten of nine, depending on how.
Well, depending on.
The length of our.
The challenge awaiting us.
We shall return.
Okay. All right, are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay, so we are still in session, and we are back from our executive session, and, um.
Do we reopen? You have to have a roll call vote to reopen.
I make a motion that we reopen our regular session to continue it.
Okay, roll call?
Aye.
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 All right, we're back in. We're going to have a vote on the proposed two thousand sixteen, two thousand to two thousand nineteen Foxborough Extended Day Staff Memorandum of Agreement. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion that we accept the contract as agreed upon between the administration and the extended day staff.
I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zeros. Okay, thank you for all your hard work on the contract negotiations, Mrs. Penelope and Bill Utner.
And we actually should compliment our extended day staff representatives who give up their time as well to, to come and do that, so they're, they're, um, it's an important program that we run, extended day.
Absolutely.
Important for families, important to children, for the continuity of their day, the safety of being in one place, so I, I can't say enough about the program. I think it's, it's terrific, and I think they do a great job.
I agree. Other matters, Mrs. Penelope?
The super, the last superintendent's evening coffee of the year is tomorrow night, Tuesday, at the Boyd and Library in the Fuller Room. And we're gonna switch it up to cold drinks and some pastry rather than the decaffeinated coffee and the donut hole, so, you know, come one, come all. Actually, so Dr. Burleson and I always do that together to, for whoever wants to show up from our parent-family group. And we are gonna have our guest, Allison Mello, who's our KDAE Math Science Director, coming tomorrow night to follow up on some of the subjects from the last meeting and offer a little bit more detail about that, so.
Is it six thirty?
It is, six thirty, eight o'clock at the Boyd and Library Fuller Room. Hope to see you there.
All right.
And I just have Steve come.
I have, I have.
I thought you did someone else.
I had a couple other things, but Debbie, I'll go let you.
Okay, I want to thank the World Language Staff for their World Language and Culture Night, which was the most successful one yet. And there were up to nineteen restaurants and food places around that helped contribute to that. It seems to get bigger and better every single year.
That is very true. It was wonderful.
It was definitely bigger than any other year.
I know, it grows every year. And then I also, I think, I would like to compliment Kathy Layden on putting together such an incredible, expanding horizons, enrichment program. There are a couple of things I want to sign up. I think I've aged out, though, but.
It's a fabulous program. My kids did that several years when they were in first, well, kindergarten through fourth grade.
No one can say that Foxborough does nothing for enrichment for their young people.
This is, this is the time where I say, oh, thanks for you for remembering it, I'm sure I'll be saying it to you. Um, I think you can, I'm glad you brought that up because I think you can see that we're running the math camp that we have for many years now, but we're also, for the second year in a row, running our computer science summer camps, which we started last year, pretty excited about that. I've been back and forth with, with them, and they are running, you actually are going to have a choice of two different weeks this year.
Oh, that's great.
And if you have someone at the beginner level, which is age seven to twelve, video game design, and they're gonna have a Star Wars theme one week, July eighteen to twenty-two, and they're gonna have a superhero theme the second week, July twenty-five to twenty-nine, and then, hmm, I thought we were gonna flip-flop morning and afternoon, but I'm looking at this and I don't see that. So maybe they decided not to flip-flop. Remember we talking about flip-flopping in morning and afternoon? And so the intermediate level, nine to fourteen, one to four P.M., Minecraft modding. And that will run, you'll have a choice of those two weeks as well.
Sounds great. And then I did have one other little thing.
On the math camp, I think we, I'm sure we're gonna bring it in as a donation.
We did get the donation, I noticed that, there was no tuition here. We were, we weren't sure, you know, Schneider Electric and Vence's. No, it hasn't come in, but every year they have generously supported the math camp. And, you know, as you know, companies change and grow, and we weren't sure if that would continue, and it is gonna continue at least this one more summer. Very generously, but, hmm. I'm just now going back to that, that whole morning-afternoon flip, so I guess we're not flipping because I don't see it in there, so.
It could be just, uh, they missed it on the, on the typing, so.
On the registration?
Yeah, it might have.
But this is what went home to families. All right, well, anyway, we're running computer science camp two separate weeks because we had such great interest.
Very good.
And throughout the year.
And I wanted to compliment once again the art department on this incredible monumental art show. And I mean, they carry the whole theme totally through, and the monumental, uh, award certificates match the, match the artwork. It's, it's just amazing. So we have nothing, nothing of the school committee can go up and destroy that.
Oh, no.
We will look at the student artwork. Forget our. Forget our blue for a few weeks.
Marilyn, do you wanna give us an update on the DECA? Have you heard from your son?
I've heard from him, um, they're having fun. Lauren and Elena from Merkin Idol did a concert for the eighteen thousand students.
Oh, wow.
They're there.
Can you imagine the enthusiasm with that?
And I don't know how the competition part's going, he's just telling me all the fun stuff. Those few little words I get hearing there.
I saw on Twitter the opening ceremonies was, looked so exciting, it's ma-
I didn't get that.
Oh, I'll have to show it to you.
Yes, you need to.
It, it's, it, it looked so exciting, like who wouldn't wanna be there. Right, and it looked it.
And I know that, um-
It looked like a rock concert, I'll show you.
Yeah, that's probably the Lauren and Elena performance. Um, and I just wanted to thank everyone for a wonderful year, and I'm hoping to get re-elected next Monday, 'cause I don't want this to be my last meeting, so.
Okay.
We'll see how it goes.
Well, good luck to you and all of the other candidates.
All of the candidates, correct.
On Monday, all of the candidates. It's an exciting election year.
Marilyn and I will be attending, uh, with Mrs. Finelli, the, um, Mask Day on the Hill tomorrow.
Oh, that's great. It's an excellent lunch, we had a phenomenal lunch last year when we went, it's a good day.
There are actually several important updates this year on, um, charter school funding, on transportation bills, on chapter seventy funding, and what's happened with that, up and down, and what hopefully will be happening on pre-K and kindergarten funding.
Open legislation.
A lot of really, um, things that do impact our district as well as any district. So it'll be interesting to see what they have to say tomorrow as to the latest.
We can't wait to hear about it at our next meeting. That sounds great. Steve, do you have anything for other matters?
Uh, no, I, this is my last meeting, and, uh-
Yes, oh, we're on my list.
I would just, uh, like to sincerely thank the, the public for electing me and, um-
That was a big win.
Huh?
It was a big win.
The ticker-tape parade was the most exciting part. You know, through Miss Field and Foxborough. But it, it truly was the, one of the most meaningful things that I've ever been able to do in my adult life. It, it really was, for me and my family, and, uh, the heart and soul and character in this town is incredible. And what we've seen over the last three years with, you know, students and faculty that have come and gone is, is, uh, a lot of people in the public don't see what goes on in the background, all within propriety of ethics. But there's a lot of heart in this group, and, um, I, I can't thank you all enough for the kindness you showed me and my family when my parents passed, and, uh, I will really miss this group a lot. Thank you all.
Well, you can still come talk to us.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for doing this.
Thanks very much.
It's, it's been a pleasure to talk to you about issues important to our kids, and I'm sure we still will.
Well, you all care, and the qualities of schools are why I'm here and why other people come here, and, um, that's why we moved here, was for the schools. And, and a lot of regional iced coffee stores that are very close by for you. Two very important things. But thank you all very, I love you all very much, and, and thank you all very much. And, and to Janet, the, the quietest member at, at our table who does so much for all of us in the background professionally, and, uh, and Bill, and, and, and the other team, and Joe.
Oh, Joe.
It's not gonna be the same seeing you all the time, my friend, but we love you here very much. All right, buddy.
Well, Steve, I wanna thank you. I've, I have had the pleasure of sitting at a table with you for the last seven years, three on the advisory committee, and the last, the last three here, uh, with you. And, uh, I am going to miss your valuable input, your questions, your sense of humor, and I thank you for your dedication and hard work on behalf of our citizens and our schoolchildren. Thank you for everything.
Couldn't have been more of a pleasure, and I wanna, I wish Bruce was here, and I'll, I'll give him a call. Not in a serial fashion. But I, I will give him a call. Bruce has been an excellent chair over the years and, uh, an excellent contributor to our town, and, and, uh, I'm sorry he can't be here tonight, but, um, he means a lot to me, too.
Well, thank you very much for all of your service.
I just had a couple other things to add to the other matters. I saw, um, that the Borough School is doing a Walk-a-thon tomorrow to raise, uh, funds for DIPG research and to honor, um, Danny Nickerson. And I just thought that was so-
Yes, they've decided to do that annually instead of other community service type things that the school did. And I think, I think that's a great way for his, his school family to remember him.
Yes, I, I, I agree, and I just wanted to mention that because I, I thought it was a, a very, um, wonderful way to recognize their classmate and, and to do community service. And I also, um, our history department trip to Italy and France was a success. From, from my sources tell me, they, they had a wonderful time. I know we talked a lot about that trip, and they went, they came back, they had a great time, and, and, uh, it's all good.
Yes.
That's all I have, so many good things. The music department, kids are leaving on Wednesday.
They are, it's-
For their festival of music for.
It's, well, it's a week, week from Wednesday.
No, no, they're leaving Wednesday, this Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
But then they're coming back, oh.
They come back, and then they go to Elton.
And then they're coming back, then they leave again. I'm thinking about the Elton leave day.
Two trips.
I can't keep up.
Two trips.
I honestly can't keep up with that, nor, nor am I trying, actually.
Lot of good things going on, so.
And they went to the symphony between last meeting and this one.
They did, and the, the symphony on, uh, April sixteenth, our, our O'Hearn School students and our high school students, it was magnificent. I was there.
We have a lot of kids doing so.
Yes. All right, would anyone like, Amy? Anything? Bill? Shannon?
Well, I am gonna say this evening that, Steve, I will miss you as well. You've been a true gentleman, thank you.
I'll miss your little left-handed backward checks on all those warrants.
Will we still be getting like Swedish goodies?
Yeah, they'll still, I can still make that stuff happen. And thanks to our friends back there.
Yes.
Who keep, keep the show on, she keep the show going and keeping the records. They do a lot of work before we get here and after we get here and while we're leaving here. So thanks to our friends at Foxborough Cable Access.
Steve, do you wanna make the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Tonight's meeting.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
All right.